I'll cart ramen still be here.
If we could, uh, grant it in so we can get started. All right, so we are recording. We're gonna call the meeting at quarter at 7:15. This is the special town council meeting of Thursday, June 14th. We are in the Investor's Room at the Town Hall. And I ask to join Ian and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilor Eaucler? Present. Councilor Carrasco? Councilor Clemens?
Present.
Councilor DePietro?
Present.
Councilor Mano? Councilor Morales?
Present.
Councilor Nash?
Present.
Councilor Steve?
Present.
Six present.
Thank you. And just for the record, as I said earlier at the previous meeting, that Councilor Mano had mentioned she couldn't make it this evening and Councilor Carrasco sent an email this afternoon saying he would not be making any meetings. Uh, he would be out of town 6:14 through 6:26. Some of you are questioning, uh, we have a special, this is a special council meeting, um, to go over a number of issues in regard to our solar projects. Um, and, uh, it was brought to our attention and it needed quick attention. So rather than, uh, pushing it and waiting for subcomities and such, we are here with representation this evening to discuss this. And I think it's a great opportunity for the community in general to be able to hear more on this solar project that's been in the works for a few years with MeLink. And, um, so therefore, that's what we're doing this evening. Oh, let's see, so on your agenda, the first thing, uh, we're gonna take these slightly out of order. Um, it was brought to our attention that because there are, uh, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten items that are all related. It all has to do with contracts, all on the same, with the same company, different parcels of land in our community. The first couple of them, uh, what is now known as four and five, and also, uh, six and seven, those four, it would make more sense to bring to the bottom and to start with number eight. And then, once we've gotten all the information, it will make more sense then to move on to those four items, which are a little more involved, even though again, they are offsets of the original contracts and plans. They're a little bit more involved on the changes that are happening. So, we will start with, um, agenda item, what is known as number eight. Call it number four. Um, and I do appreciate, uh, Canoyer, uh, Mr. Canoyer, our assessor, who put together this and made sure he checked these out. I will also, you'll notice I'll be reading a few extra digits of each, on each of these motions, that so that it's correctly read. Again, Mr. Canoyer pointed out that some of the digits were missing, so he's given me a paper that has the correct reading. So I just wanna make sure. Uh, Mr. Sanangelo, do you want to say something?
Yeah, thank you, well, just gonna, are you ready to start?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so first, I wanna thank, uh, the Chairwoman for calling this special meeting for this. And, and we asked for this special meeting for a couple of reasons. One is that, uh, this is the board that's been involved in this project for a long time. We all recognize that we're gonna be moving to a new board. But we wanted you guys with experience with this issue to be able to tackle this issue. And we had the time to do that. So it was important to bring it back here in, in a timely manner. Secondarily, uh, we've been waiting a long time for this project. And the reason we've been waiting a long time is that you guys all remember that we were in line to the SREC 2, State Incentive Program for Solar. And we all knew when we negotiated this contract, uh, that that program was coming to an end and that we were potentially on a waiting list and maybe we would get in and maybe we wouldn't. As a matter of fact, when we negotiated the contract, we had a, a high level amount and we had a floor because we realized that the new program was not gonna have the kind of incentive that the SREC 2 program had. So we all kinda knew that and we put that into our negotiations. And frankly, what you're gonna see tonight is not all that different. Uh, that, this, that one big contract for all the parcels of land now is broken out to individual contracts that are very much like the original, but for specific parcels of land because that's something the investor needs to market the, the actual pilot program. Uh, Steve Madals from Merrick Island has been a tremendous asset in working with me and, and I wanna really praise our, our town assessor, Will Canoyer, who's been working. Will's become somewhat of a solar expert in the state. Uh, I'm not sure by choice, but we've, we've kinda made him one, particularly as it revolves around the pilot program and how the tax is coming on these program and even other towns are reaching out to Will now as a result of, kind of, the work that we've done in the last couple of years on this project. Uh, and Will's gonna go through the, the numbers and the changes and how it impacted the town between SREC and, and now the new SMART program. Okay? The SMART program, we, we waited a couple of years on this because it's up to the state to make this program change. And in effect, SMART isn't actually started quite yet, but it's gonna be shortly. So this is time to get into the SMART program and get the first round, which has higher incentives than some future rounds are gonna happen, okay? The one big change to this that we do wanna talk about, and I've talked a little bit about it with Gus and, uh, a little less about it with Denise, to kinda get pretty for this because Burton Engineering has been working with MeLink, the company that's the head of this, looking at potential changes on the Charlton Street property. And that's a significant change from what we've talked about in the past. And I'm gonna let Will get into that. But I think the recognition here is that when they, the, the main point is, when they looked at the land to build a solar array there, they found out that the land was just horrible. It was too rocky, too costly. Just wasn't worth doing that project. And now, they've shrunk that project down dramatically and they're looking at the, the paved area on the side of Charlton Street. And they've, to your, to your question that's gonna come up, it's a very narrow piece there. Now, the, the, uh, the hut, I'm using the wrong description. It's a, it's like a hut, you know? You're talking about the, I can't think of the name of it. It's a, but that area, the parking lot, is not part of that. It's literally just the paved area that we're looking at. And, and we'll get into the details of that more. But that's the significant change in terms of the, the property. And with that, um, you're gonna have, uh, the reason you have all these motions is that, uh, it's five different parcels we're talking about now. And each of those par, each of those parcels have a pilot tax agreement with them. So it's ten motions to combine, you know, to do each one. It's, it's the lease and then the pilot, the lease and the pilot offer off by pieces. That's why there's so many motions here. With that, um, again, I wanna start with two thanking Steve. Steve's been a longtime partner in putting this thing together and, and, uh, we've all kinda grown together on this project 'cause it was a newbie. Steve, you wanna talk about the changes in terms of the contract terms? Because there's some minor variations from the original contract. We already have that contract in place. So we kinda have to deal with the fact we're in contract. This is just modifications to that, if you will. No, why don't you stand up so people can hear you and talk here? Come on, come up here with me, grab the chair and just swing on up.
All right, thank you.
I grabbed that chair and just pulled it up with you or grabbed, or, yeah, just grab that chair.
Yeah, I was as gray as I am now. Mr. Manager, I was last year with the council. But, um, some of you may recall, uh, the, the town put these out, the solar arrays, um, we're not getting energy off of these like some other, uh, arrangements that you'll hear municipalities with net metering. These are strictly leases for solar uses. Uh, and as the manager mentioned, when it went out, there were, it, uh, MeLink was the selected respondent. Uh, they did, they, there were a number of sites that were available, including rooftops, but all those went away and we ended up with, uh, this one solar ground lease for five sites. The airport was a separate site. But the five sites were in one document and, uh, there were provisions in it that we negotiated at length to mitigate risk for the town of Southbridge for entering these deals. One of the most significant, uh, hurdles in that initial effort was there was significant financial penalties for the town if it ever terminated the leases on the solar arrays. And the reason for that was because of the tax exempt financing, that these get marketed on a secondary market. And if the town terminated the lease early, it could've put the financing at risk. So there were penalty clauses in the original lease.
Just so you remember, if you remember, at the very back of the lease, it was a schedule. If you terminated it five years, it would cost the town this much. If you scheduled eight years, ten years, and it went down. And the longer you went, the less your penalty was, right? That is gone.
We negotiated for it. If we lost one site, we tried to expand another site so we wouldn't be out of pocket, all of this effort. Um, and we brought that to Town Council. And we also had an edit from Town Council. One of the councils suggested, um, including a security requirement for, uh, once sites are open, if they don't go to, um, actual commercial operation, we'd have security to restore, uh, the land area if the, uh, tenant did not. So that security provision remains. So all that effort, um, on getting these into SREC 2, um, and MeLink was in the queue, uh, for SREC 2. And if, if you're a little bit aware of how this, uh, program works with the Department of Energy Resources of the Commonwealth, they require the publicly licensed utility companies to purchase, um, solar energy at, uh, up to a certain capacity. Uh, and municipal, there was a, a capacity silo, if you will, for municipal properties, um, that was filling up. And MeLink was in the queue when the window closed. So unfortunately for us, in for MeLink, uh, we lost the, um, opportunity to get SREC 2 after all of that effort. But we did know, as the manager mentioned, at the time, that it was a race. All projects were racing at, at that time, across the Commonwealth to get in the window for SREC 2. So we didn't wanna lose all the effort we had. We included in our single agreement for the five sites, a provision that, a floor, if you will, that under the successor program, we were referring to it at the time as SREC 3. And it was known it was gonna be much less, well, it was gonna be less financially beneficial as SREC 2. But, so we had a floor for the successor program so we wouldn't have to revisit all the terms we had negotiated. And it proved to be, uh, kinda right on in terms of what the successor program allows for. The successor program is known as SMART. And I have some, for instance, this is an outline of the, one of the D O E R publications of, like, the financial, um, with the SREC credits and the rate you would realize on a solar project under SREC 2 and then under SMART. You can see what they traded off, the instability, but the higher rate for predictability or lower return on the SMART program. So, um, and as the manager also mentioned, under the SMART program, the, um, rates decline. There are eight blocks of capacity that are available for projects across the state. And that first block is the most, uh, is the highest available rate. It will go down 4% for each successor block. So MeLink was anxious with us to get, be ready for Block 1. And that's why, uh, they asked for, and we agreed with, uh, kind of, this meeting tonight as a special meeting, rather than wait for your schedule. So, what, if you read through what the SMART program requires, it's very site-specific as to some of the attributes that there are rate adders or, you know, um, that bump up the rate for certain site criteria. And then there were some provisions that disincentivize some sites, like if it was agricultural land. Um, and so that is one of the reasons, I think, MeLink required that the original lease with five sites be separated into four separate leases. Um, and I can go through, and it's four because two of the sites are combined under one, Dresser Hill and Torrey Road. But there are very few changes that were made in the lease form other than separating out the sites to separate lease documents and separate pilots. I can just quickly highlight for the council because you did approve this, as you say, that back in 16. So some of the new, one of the new terms is that it acknowledges that this is, um, to facilitate the separation of the original lease. It's a restatement of the original lease. So separating it into, uh, four successor documents. It specifies the execution date, it's November 30th, 2016. That was when we signed the original, uh, master lease, if you will. It deleted the term power purchase agreement, which was improper, you know, not necessary to be in there because, again, we're not getting any, uh, excuse me, any, um, power purchasing off of these leases. We're simply leasing land for solar.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Ms. Madals, could you, uh, you're going through the lease. It would've been really helpful because we've seen these leases before and we've read through, some of us.
Yeah.
It would've been nice to, just for future reference, when you do a lease or a change like this, if this ever happens, that if you could've highlighted an area where the changes were made. But if you're going through it now, if you could, so we could actually, like, take a look?
Sure.
Are you going through, is that what you're doing?
I have a.
Or you have a summary sheet?
No, I have a black line that shows the edits against the original.
Okay.
And, um.
So... 'Cause I did not really notice. Could you, yeah, where?
It is the same, it is a commonality to all of them, so.
Okay. So, right, so in which section specifically?
Right, sure.
So we can kinda take a quick read of the specifics?
Yeah, uh, on the first page, um, under the recitals.
Yep.
B and C.
Which one is this, real?
Yeah, there are, but there are, there's.
No, we're in all order.
I know, but it's just.
It should be all the same.
Yeah, but there's, there's something's all the same.
Right. I, so, but you're, you're right, uh, the time is right. I don't know, at some point I'll drift from whatever document you have. But B, the recitals, B and C.
Mm-hmm.
Are, um, new. And again, that's the separation of, uh, just reciting that there was a master lease and now to facilitate, it's separated into these various leases. Going on to the defined terms, which is Section 1. After the term permits, there previously was a defined term power purchase agreement. So power purchase, that has been deleted.
That's on page four.
Yeah. Now, power purchase agreements are if you, if we were purchasing energy from the solar arrays or if we were getting net metering credits. We are not. So that term was deleted. The other edits were, you know, where, where, where plural leased properties, like for instance in Section 2A, it just went to the singular leased property.
Yeah, that's okay, we don't need that.
Okay.
I'm thinking of the meat.
Yeah, meat. Uh, Section 3. Um, there was a, on the, in A obligations. Now, these are the things that the, the developer had to satisfy. You know, you know, the, one of the reasons it's a long process for solar arrays is they identify the site, but they don't know the size of the arrays until they start doing field work, survey work. And all the while, the technology's changing so they don't know what their production's gonna be, whether they can interconnect, right? Get this energy to the grid, how costly is that gonna be? And so, these are the, um, hurdles, if you will, for them to clear, to have a binding agreement. Because if they can't interconnect, they don't wanna lease the land, for instance. There previously was a Roman, a different Roman at 4, under 3A, which, um, referenced the SREC 2 program. Since we're beyond that, that was stricken. Here's a good one. Uh, also in Section 3, Part C.
Top of page 7.
Sit down, 7.
Okay. The last two sentences of that paragraph are new. And, um, there is, as the manager mentioned, the successor program SMART has been a year, at least a year in the works by D O E R as the successor program to SREC 2. It's still not open. They had said it was gonna open in, I think, January. And here we are in June. The latest word is end of the summer. So.
So there's the, I see the 1,500.
Yeah, so, so, but part of this, uh, through the chair is that the landlord will keep us informed of their efforts to get into SMART. And then also, um, we had the investor at the table this time. 'Cause a lot of these, you get the field people that land sites. And then they market these sites to investors on the federal tax credits. And then the investor takes a whole second look at your docs. But this time, we had the benefit of the investor being on calls and we could negotiate with them. And we told them, boy, we spent a lot of time. How about some money towards our legal fees? So they gave us 1,500 per each lease if the site gains commercial operation.
So here's what happened. When we divided it from the one to five, we now had to write up five separate pages.
Yeah, right, so why should they incur the cost?
Right, that's what it was.
Finally ask for something.
We would've liked more, but it was something, um.
Right, because if we didn't, so, yeah, I mean, well, we're, cancel it? I mean, they're not gonna work with us.
Why should we have to do the work for their changes, right?
Right.
Can you give us an idea of how much we've actually spent on legal fees on this so far?
For the total?
Yeah.
Above, uh, $34,000.
Received about 4.5 million dollars.
Well, but it's been how many?
It's a good return.
That's over.
Yeah.
Four years?
Yeah, that's not, yeah, that's not bad.
Right.
And I, I mean, I only brought one file of my, I mean, it.
It's a lot of work. Oh, a lot of work. It's been a lot of meetings.
Oh, I'm sure.
Okay, moving on. This is another beneficial change for the town. In Section 4, term site stabilization. Again, that's where the site stabilization requirements were added. Early termination. It previously read that if landlord terminated early, uh, we would be obligated to pay to tenant, um, values that were set forth in Exhibit E. So that would've, um, as a contract term, avoided any litigation over the claim of the value. It had a specified, and it was, as the manager mentioned, that early, first seven years, I think, those tax credits, that it was substantial millions of dollars.
Millions of dollars of risk on the tax.
And then it would, then it diminished significantly. But, uh, this investor said we didn't have to, um, carry that risk in these successor agreements. So all of those specified terms have been deleted for, uh, landlord's payment to tenant for early default. Now, that doesn't mean we're not without liability. If we default early, it'd be breach of the lease.
But that was our default anyway. I mean, that would've us saying, hey, we're done. We don't want you doing this anymore.
After they. If we needed the land or something else, we wanted.
Yeah, I mean, but that, that, yeah. The likelihood of us canceling out on something like that had to.
Well, 20 years, you don't, you know, you don't know.
I get that, but, but ultimately, you knew the risk you would have to, you.
Yeah.
You'd make that, you'd not make that decision really nearly. I mean, it's gonna, Councilor, go clear.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. For you, didn't that also include, um, you know, if something happened where, um, the, the solar, the solar arrays were, you know, blocked by something?
No, we can't allow that, no. That, that's something, if it occurs, we have to correct that.
No, we're, we're getting to that.
There's just a little bit of risk above, but not the same as the termination.
They gave us, they gave us something on that term as well.
Yeah, there's different determination.
No, it's, it's, it's great that it's gone, obviously. Early termination is fantastic, but it's gone. I mean, I think we looked at that as a risk when we looked at it, saying, well, what, really, what would be the scenario that that would happen? And it wasn't, it was marginal, but it was there.
Well, it seemed to be disproportionate to the.
Exactly.
Return we were getting for the risk we were taking.
Right, right.
So we, we worked to mitigate it the whole time and now it's gone.
Oh, it's gone, yeah.
But you're right on that point about the, you know, in, council should be aware that the lease is not merely the lease of the land areas that are shown. There's access rights that are defined. And then there's utility installation, you know, where they install the line. And then there's a solar access easement that we will not block sunlight to the arrays. But we're gonna get to that term. Okay, moving forward. In Section 5, installation, operation and ownership of the solar facility. In D, access, operation, repair and replacement. We had a term that, um, because, if you recall, we, we had a master agreement covering all the sites. So we had a term, some of the sites are school property or adjacent to schools. We had a query requirement if, uh, personnel were gonna be installing solar in the proximity of our schools. That came out for all but the, um, Charlton Street.
Right, so, yeah. 'Cause it wasn't applicable anymore.
Yeah, this made sense. These other, there's some changes on the, again, on the singular versus the plural. Uh, now we're, I'm up to, um, Section 8, solar access.
Pages, number, page 11.
Question, Councilor Steve?
I saw the query requirement. Why, why didn't we keep it for the one that's right behind the high school? The, the, the Torrey Road sites are accessed basically from the high school.
Do, do, the original reason why it was in here at Allstate? If you remember Gus, it was because at one point, we were gonna buy power for them and they were gonna put it on the roofs of certain buildings.
Yeah, I remember that.
That's where, really, that was the real reason for why it was in there. Now it's not gonna be inside the facilities anymore so they shouldn't be near any of the kids anymore. That was the reason why it was in. When we got away from purchasing power and having it tied directly into the school, that went away.
Is there any concern, has, has there, have you looked at how? Because how does the, so when, when they're building these things, I mean, is there, are they actually using, are they actually accessing it through the high school property at all? Are they going around it or? I mean, honestly, honestly, the maps in here are not really clear. It's kind of hard to read them, so.
Will can answer, Dan.
The access to that property.
Just my, my feet on the ground there. On the town dump road, it's a completely different access road up, uh, further west. And then from there, they access the access road to the sites down in the valley. So they're not even near the high school.
Because I know the playing fields have access from that side, though.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah.
But they're not in the high school. And I, I believe Mike Comley talked about the scheduling when they're gonna be building this, right?
Well, they're trying, they're trying to build it when the school's not in session so much. You're gonna work in the afternoons and weekends and do stuff. They don't wanna do anything that impacts the school, Gus, so they're gonna work around that schedule. And that's been discussion between MeLink and the school system itself, the various, the various, uh, receivers. Because they've had a number of conversations as receivers changed.
Okay.
Anyone else feel good?
Uh, okay, so I'm on Section 8, solar access easing tenant remedies. Tenant is the developer, right? So in Subpart B, it's just the, the end of Section 8. This was if we violate the solar easement, which is if we, uh, install something that blocks sunlight to the arrays. There was a sentence at the end of this paragraph B that read, additionally, landlord agrees to reimburse tenant for any lost revenue that tenant may suffer due to lost power production. So if their arrays go dark 'cause we've got a billboard up or something, uh, and they factor in that they've lost 20% of the power that that ordinary produces, by that prior term, we were obligated to cut them a check for that lost production. That sentence is now deleted, gone from all five of leases. So they, they would still have a remedy to come after us. They'd probably seek specific enforcement, you know, remove whatever you're doing. So we wouldn't have to make them whole for the loss. And that came out in all five. So all of these changes are tallied. In Section 12, insurance, warranty indemnity. It was a original, originally, there was a waiver of subordination clause for the, relative to property insurance or insurance claims. And, um, with MeLink at the table, I told them I wasn't certain that the town could agree to a waiver of subordination. And, um, they allowed for, uh, a one-sided waiver of sub, which I'd never seen on their side, where they would waive it. I didn't know how that would work, but they agreed that we didn't have to provide a waiver. And then when the investor came on board, he's looked at it And then when the investor came on board, he looked at it and said he'd never seen a one-sided waiver of subrogation, sought to restore the original mutual waiver, and we asked our insurance advisor if we could enter contracts with waiver of subrogation. The answer was no, so we just struck the clause.
This was worked off through me in the insurance company.
Curious, what does that mean? So if there's, between the two parties, if there's a claim, and our insurance company pays us, ordinarily, they could go after, step into our shoes, and go after whoever's responsible for that damage or injury, even though they paid us, they take our claim. If we've entered the waiver of subrogation, now they, we've denied them a claim against the tenant, MeLink. They told us they wouldn't allow for that. Sometimes you risk your coverages if you enter contracts that way, so you always have to ask the insurance provider, would this be okay? At least, that's my understanding of it. All right, moving on, not a lot changed in the rest of the, nothing changed in the rest of the document. Ed, I'm sorry, the last sentence is new on, in section 23, miscellaneous, and ratification. This lease amends, restates, and supersedes in all respects the original agreement. And then, of course, the date for the manager's signature. Relative to the five sites, the only, definitely, the properties are all the same, the lease premises only changed at Charlton Street School. We also, we didn't have title reports when we were racing, because, you know, I don't know if you ever had to do a title report on town-owned property, it takes a long time, and it's expensive. MeLink pays for all the title reports. The title reports reveal some encumbrances on some of the parcels that we may or may not have been aware of, but now they're in this document, so that with a clause that MeLink is taking them subject to, so we wouldn't have liability for that, like we may have had previously, because it was unknown. I'd like to talk to the counsel about, there's one, I think it's this property, the Torrey, Torrey Lane.
To come back about the dirt roads.
Yeah, there's one, there's Paper Streets, where the town acquired these parcels by tax title takings. If you're aware with, if you don't pay your taxes, eventually, the treasurer collector can go to the land court, foreclose on the property. So that's how the town acquired these parcels, was an old subdivision, I think from the 30s.
Yeah, that's the Worcester Street, Worcester Street property.
Okay, thank you. So, but I, I just want to make the counsel aware that the investor's title examiner had concerns about the town's rights in that property that we acquired by the tax title foreclosure so many years ago, and so our thought was that we would just do a confirmatory taking. None of those ways exists, so when we foreclosed on the lots, arguably, we got title to all the ways that are but the lots as well on either side, but to the extent there might be any lingering rights of private parties to the ways, we would do a confirmatory takings to make sure we've got good title for the solar arrays for their investment.
There's no value in that, just our taking.
Yeah, we wouldn't be denying anyone access to any, any place, because those roads are not in use or developed. Or, yeah, the Paper Streets.
That's going to come later, probably.
Yeah, that is just one of the issues that was identified as we reviewed the title reports.
Counselor Steve has a question.
Under section 18, and I was curious, can you explain a little bit about how that, how the process works about, it mentions here, on the commercial operation date, and it shall post security with landlord in form of a bond, cash deposit, or letter of credit to secure the tenant's performance as a priority. Really, but I was curious about, what I'm curious about is talking about the required security that shall be determined by a mutually agreeable independent interim firm, blah, 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 delivered to the tenant prior to the commercial operation date. Has that been determined yet?
No, no, because commercial operation date is the date that system goes live.
Right.
So there's a lot to be done before, you know, you would need to know the size of a system to determine how much of a bond you require for its decommissioning. So those unknowns have to be filled in, and then someone could evaluate it and say, you would need 80 grand or 100 grand. So that will follow, but it's an obligation, and it's often a difficult one to kind of square, because they don't want to carry the security for the 20 years, but if they terminate early, we want to have the security to clear the site if we.
Well, I mean, it's the same kind of thing, like with a planning board project, where they require, put, put money down for a tri-party agreement or something like that, so.
Right, yeah, we want some form of security.
Absolutely.
And also, we have a, I didn't go over it, because you may recall, but we have a right of, an option of purchase at the termination, upon either expiration or termination, if we wanted to.
That was in it before the last.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah, I remember that. How much of a value would that have? I mean, would that be, I mean, would that be based on, for example, if we wanted to purchase it at the end, would it be based on the recommended, the accepted life of the panels as they, as they were then, or?
There's terms in there to get valuation.
Right, you'd have to get, there's an appraisal per system, Gus, you bring in people, they would appraise the value of it, and then we would decide if we wanted to buy it or not. There's a, a process between us and them, the operator, to get an independent appraiser.
And also, it would, I think it would depend on how much, how often have they been upgrading equipment? Because solar panels have that degradation, right, over time?
Right.
And if they're the original panels, maybe it's the cost of the materials is worth something to us if we can, but, but if they've been upgrading them with new technologies, maybe we do want to purchase it and, and put it behind a meter for our own consumption. Because, as I say, when this started, we're not getting any energy from this, which is decent.
I'm assuming you're going to be going through the pilot agreement, too, because that actually ties into a question I had in the pilot.
Right, so one comment about the pilot agreement, though, it's a little bit of a misnomer, I think Will might agree with me, that these aren't exempt from property taxes.
Yeah, right.
But DOR said there ought to be predictability for the industry as to what the assessment, so you can enter agreements on their assessment. So this wasn't, this isn't a voluntary, the term pilot has been just carried by everybody, and so the valuations are determined by what we actually think the valuation would be, and then we just give it a 20-year schedule. So it's not a break, it's, was negotiation, it's what the valuation is, and then the payment schedule follows. And I don't know if that's a fair segue, you know, we did not talk about the valuations of the rental sums, it's $10,000 per megawatt, which is not where we were, but it might have smart. It's the new reality, new regulatory environment we're in.
Where were we, John?
Third. So, significant, but relative to this smart program, it's, it's block one, or it may be block one or nothing, I don't know. I mean, you know, it's going to get, if it goes down 4%, if they don't make block one, it's.
It's not worth doing.
Yeah, I don't know what.
Then we'd spend $35,000 on legal fees?
Well, we're going, well, hopefully, we'll get some of that back if they, you know, not a lot, but.
Right. Okay. All right, so.
If I may add, most of the solar deals I've worked on, a lot of them have been prolonged. A lot of them have gone off the rails, and you try to bring them back, and the regulatory environment changes, you know, the SREC window was a moving target, smart still isn't open, it's, but, the nature of it.
Okay, so you're, so any questions in regard, because we haven't, you know, we're not, we're moving on to motions yet, I gather, we have two ways to do this, we can move forward with the votes, or we can talk about pilot programs, so that we know every bit of information, and dispose of it at the first, and then move on to Charlton Street and, Charlton Street and what's, the airport, which is a little bit different, or we can just go over, continue to go over the information, and then finally do all the votes after. Whatever counsel feels.
You're prerogative, I'm good either way.
Okay, should we talk pilot, then, so that we know what we're doing before we?
If I may, to the chair, there are two items said, I don't want to forget about. MeLink surveyor identified one little tweak, if you will, on the access road for 134 Torrey Road. So they, but they submitted a revised meets and bounds, which is an exhibit to that lease A2. If you would accept that as an amendment to that, to what's before you, we'll incorporate the revised.
So it's not in this?
Correct.
It's not in what we're reading, but it's, but if you're telling us you're saying, because we're amending it, wrote to amend, and you're suggesting that's an amendment to what we're, to the original contract? Or does it have to be something that's stated in the actual vote?
I have it, it's just, it's, it's very minor. What happened was, they discovered that the, the border of the former landfill was closer to the site than they expected, so they didn't want to have their access road over the former landfill, so they moved in around it.
Oh, okay.
So they would, and it's almost negligible.
Okay, so.
I think they brought that up with the planning board.
Okay.
They twisted the road a little.
Yeah, and I have it.
So, Ms. Bittes, so what you're saying is that you're going to be amending some document in this piece that we have here in this backup material, is that what you're saying?
I think if you voted and state, including the revised meets and bounds received from MeLink.
Well, currently, it's just amended, to ratify the amended and restated solar ground lease between the town of Southbridge and MeLink, so you're telling us you're going to include that into here?
Yes.
You're telling us you're going to include that into here.
So you'll take it now, yeah, but as you vote it, okay.
It hasn't been done yet.
Yeah, for the record, yeah.
What other amendment do you want in here before we vote on it?
No, that's, I think you can, if you accept it now, for the record, that it's as amended, you know, what's before you.
Right, that's what I'm saying, you give us everything, because if you change it after this vote, we're going to come back and amend it again.
Right, that's why I'm telling you.
Right, no, no, right.
It just came in on, I don't even know what day, what day is it today? Today is Thursday?
It's Thursday, Tuesday.
And that affects each doc, you know, the, just the overall, what we've got here, under the legal description of the leased area?
Yes.
Yes?
Of the lease that has two sites, of the lease that has two sites.
Right, but it's, it's an amendment to the original contract, right?
Yes.
It's part of this, what you're proposing tonight, right?
You don't have it.
I know I don't have it, but you're telling us about it.
Yes.
Okay, so when we go to vote on it, we are fully aware, without actually seeing a piece of paper that shows what you're telling us?
Yes.
That this is what you want?
Yes.
Okay.
And here's, there's a minute.
Are we all okay with that?
Thank you.
You know, I think we're all following that.
I follow you.
You follow, thank you, okay.
I lost everybody.
Now, you may have a question, Counselor Steve.
So if we were to phrase the motion simply as something to the effect of accepting it as the way the, the way the planning board laid out the changes, the way the planning board amended.
I think I follow the chair, I think the chair is saying, I've modified it by presenting it to you tonight, as you vote it, it will include that.
Your expectation is the amendment includes this. Our expectation is what you've told us. When I read that statement, you all know this, that's, you're very clear, it's been disclosed.
Yeah, I had one other one as well, before I forget. All of these docs, as you'll see, were prepared for the town manager's signature, as authorized by vote of this council. So I just wanted, just so the investor doesn't have us go back, maybe one final motion that, to move that the town council votes authorize the town manager to enter on behalf of the town of Southbridge, the amended and restated solar ground leases as approved by town council, and the amended and restated pilot agreements as approved by town council on this day, June 14, 2018.
You give the wording of that, so they can judge.
I'll take a, a motion to include this, I'd like a motion to include the vote that's been recommended by Ms. Attorney Madouse, as, as item number, geez, now we're going down, we're going to be 13, it's going to be item 14, and then adjournment will be 15. So that would be one of the last things we vote.
Will has stated.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Just crossing our Ts and dotting Rs. All right, all those in favor? Okay, to those present.
Thank you.
Was that to add it, or was that to vote it? Six of us.
That's to add it, that's to add, yeah, we voted at the end, did the item number 14.
Gotcha.
Okay. All right, anything else?
No, I think that was my.
We want to do the Charlton Street piece, because that's still part of the lease. Before we get to the pilot and the numbers, you want to do the Charlton Street piece as well?
Sure.
So you want to explain then?
Yeah, we want to explain the Charlton Street, because that's, that's, that pretty much, I think, mostly explains the lease without the financial part. I was going to go through the whole financial picture for everybody, but that Charlton Street piece is the one unique piece of the lease, other than the amendments, that we need to discuss. We want you to be fully informed of what that is, and if the council wants to go forward with that or not, because that is something that's completely up to your option, that was not part of the original contract. We're going to, Will will talk about that.
I guess, I think I almost would have rather disposed of everything else and then ended with that one, but that's okay.
Well, you mean, you mean vote all the other contracts?
Yeah, I would have gotten through it and then just gone on, because that's a different, and that's something we may not agree with.
Well, that's, that's why I wanted to make sure it was brought up, before we voted on that.
All right, that's all right.
So what would you like me to do, talk about the town?
Yeah, talk about it as, the one, let me express the, you know, I talked about where that site is in our review, so just to confirm, and you'll see the map, if you look at the Charlton Street lease.
So let's, let, just a minute, please. Item number six and seven is Charlton Street, it's now considered 10 and 11, but that's what we're looking at, is item six and seven.
And right now, we're really focusing on item number six, which is the lease.
Six, right.
Okay.
On your note, that's, it's mark six, that's what I'm telling you.
So an item number six, this is what I talked about, where the original project that came before town council, it's a much larger piece, it was more in the woods, behind that paved parking lot that we're all aware of. People will remember, years ago, that paved parking lot was designed to be, in the future, an ice skating rink that never, ever happened, right? So, so when they found out, when MeLink found out that the parcel behind there wasn't really workable, they shrank the project and said, that one piece, that small piece of that paved area, that would make sense to put a solar project on that. And what they're talking about, you'll see in the map, when you look at the map, you'll see that it would be fenced in, they would put beautiful trees in front of it, make it look really attractive. It doesn't affect the hut there, or the park, or any of that thing, it's strictly that one piece, and that's what Will's going to be talking about that piece. I've had a lot of conversations with the school system about that. Jeffrey Villar has talked to his staff, and he said, they're really not using that piece. It really has, you know, other than a once in a blue moon when somebody goes over there to play, it's not really a piece that anyone is really using. I had a lot of counsel, actually, we had a lot of conversations with Counselor Steve's about this, because of some concerns about restrictions. We had checked all the deeds, and there were no restrictions on any of the deeds, but Counselor Steve pointed out, he would have been here years ago when this property was turned over, and the actual paved area was created as a result of some grants, and I had Ken go back and look at everything, and we actually called Attorney Calagnese, if that's the correct name, because he was part of that, and, and we are very, very comfortable that there's no restrictions on the land at this point. I have a memo that I can read from Ken, but essentially, it says what I just told you, there's no restrictions, we're not concerned about any of those things. So the decision tonight is going to be, do we want to do that piece or not? Now, MeLink is saying, they've invested a lot of money in this project already, they'd like to get some of the return of the money they've invested, they would like to do this, it may actually not go with the same investor, the same investor is buying everything, but this one little piece, they might actually have a different investor for it, or MeLink might keep it themselves. But they've got so much money already invested in that property, they'd like to get something back of their investment, that's, so they asked me to bring it forward for your consideration, and it still has to, there's still some minor adjustments to be done, the planning commission, the planning commission postponed making any decision, but that's, that's where we are now. We'll kind of carry on from there with that, the rest of that piece.
Okay, before I do that, I want to thank Steve Madouse. I thought I would be carrying that whole part of the conversation, and I'm thrilled I didn't have to.
That's our conversation.
So, this is a map, I know it's as big as I could do without going on to the board, but, so here is Charlton Street, here you see Charlton Street School, on, on the, between the cemetery and the school you drive up, and here's the driveway going to the back, and there are soccer fields on, on the left here. On the right side, you have a little gazebo, and you have another building, you have another little maintenance shed, and there's a, right where I'm drawing is sort of rectangle there, that's where the skating, paved skating area is. And behind that, originally, all of this back here was going to be a 1.2 megawatt solar facility behind it, so it wouldn't touch the skating park. So based on their onsite work and so forth, they decided to change it from a 1.2 megawatt facility in the woods to, I got this photo here, I'll be able to find, well, this, this is the same area, a little bit more zoomed in, so you have the school, here you have the two soccer fields, here you have that little gazebo, and these, I think this is like a storage building, and where that rectangular paved area was, which is about half the width of this, this is the solar field, so we'll go over that. So, I'll pass this around, so you can all take an in-depth look at it.
There's going to be trees in front of it, and it's going to be fenced completely, there will be trees in front of it, so you really won't see anything but the trees as you're looking up on the road near Charlton Street School.
Yeah, and from a financial, from a financial point of view, it was originally going to be, like I said, about 1.2 something megawatts, down to 299.95, 300 megawatts. So what that means is, the lease in year one is 2999.50 with three grand, the lease in year 20, same thing, three grand, so the lease for those 20 years, for that solar field right there, will bring the town in $59,990 over 20 years. And the pilot, the tax payments will bring in, because it's a much smaller site, $8,976 in the first year, and it's based on depreciation, so it goes down in later years. In year 15, all the way to 20, it's down at its floor of $2,110.15. So in year 20, that's going to bring us about 5,000 bucks. In year one, it's going to bring us, about 12,000 dollars. The grand total of all the tax payments is about 104,000, and again, the grand total on the lease is 599, so over 20 years, that site will bring us 164,000 dollars.
So, but that, that was not originally in the, in the area at all. The area before was, was in the back, it was up in the hiking areas.
Exactly.
Right. They're, they're still able to do something up there, or nothing up there?
Nothing.
If they don't do this, they're not doing a solar array at the Charlton Street side, they're doing on the other, the Torrey side, the school side, which is over the hill, basically.
Correct.
First, I have issues with a chain link fence, arbivides, whatever you want to plant, it's right across from the school. That little hut you talk about, or storage, is actually supposed to be bathrooms that are supposed to be in, they're supposed to be bathrooms accessible to the soccer fields. The never, ever used ice skating situation was actually supposed to be a skate park area or potentially ice skating area, and there's no reason it shouldn't be for that neighborhood, the way we have parks for other neighborhoods. We've talked about lining, we've talked about putting in things, we've talked about doing a lot of things there, but again, money is always an issue. A lot of kids access those soccer, and football practices up there, too, I think Pop Warner at one point practices when soccer's not playing. I don't know, I don't get the solar being right there at the school and at the playgrounds, it's literally across from the playground area that's there. I don't like it, but that's just one counsel opinion. just one council opinion. When it first came to me, I was just kind of surprised. Open space, anything you want to call out, put another field there, take their tire out. I just have a problem with the solar being right there adjacent to the school. That's just, I don't know that it causes any problems, but we complain all the time about solar arrays everywhere, and I just find it just too close. And now seeing the pictures, it's even more so for me. But, and I realize, okay, 20 years, 164K, I get all that. Sometimes go draw a line, I don't know. Counselor?
Yeah, I thank you, Madam Chair, for you. I tend to agree with you. I think that the value to the community, especially that section of the community, is a lot greater than $5,000 to $10,000 per year. And while we'd all love to continue to find avenues to generate revenue, you can't put a price on, on that actual value to the community. I don't think this is the right way to go. Thank you.
Counselor?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for you. To the town manager, is this, you know, I know that you mentioned that they wanted to try and recoup some of the expenses that they've used in this area, and that's why they came up with the proposal. Is this going to be any kind of a make or break, sort of, like if they can't do it, the other projects will go forward?
I had a lot of conversation, because I told her that I knew this was going to be somewhat controversial. Now, I wasn't sure if this was gonna fly or not. And I explained that very well to her, that Donna is the woman from Mealing, just when I refer to her. So I explained to her that this was gonna be a tough one, that you may or may not do this. I wasn't sure what the judgment call was, but I knew there was gonna be some discussion. And it's not a make or break. But, you know, but Donna says, you know, we've invested a lot of money in this project, and, you know, we invest a lot of money specifically in that area. We'd like to try to get some of that money back. So do I think it's a make or break? No. This is a, this is the one area of this proposal, this is completely the council's decision as to if they want to do this or not, and there's no downside to this, other than you lose the revenue. That's the real downside to this.
Counselor Pichu?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm 100% against any solar projects going on any of these locations. I think number one, and it's probably a whole other conversation, this has been a scam back to when it was first initiated from Washington. Electric bills are going up, they're not going down. We're gonna be paying for sooner or later in federal estate taxes. And to take these lands and put this garbage all over it on that premise, I think is ridiculous. I would not support it in any measure.
So just pointing at the.
Other than that.
Great.
That is great.
So Counselor Pichu, unfortunately, we do have a contract already in place with these people. So we're already doing something. The question is whether or not letting, letting this expansion happen. That's the big question on the table right now. It's not sounding good down here, but Counselor Steves?
Yeah, I have an issue with this particular space, too. And I know that the planning board has raised concerns. Several of the planning board members had raised concerns about that, too, before they put it on hold. You know, I, it's kind of a catch, for me, it's kind of a catch 22, because yes, we do have a current contract. And I actually, I'm actually inclined to agree with Mark, but not for exactly the same reasons as David. I'm more concerned about the fact that, that all of these other parcels are slashing so many trees, and we've got so many of these solar credits going, so many pieces of property all over the place. I mean, I'll give you an example for, like, our Tory Road Dresser, Dresser Hill project is like across the street from three other solar arrays on the other side of the street. They're, they're popping up all over the place. And it's also like right next to one or two of them on this side of the street. I mean, that's why, that's why I asked you yesterday, if we could come up with a townwide map looking at where all of these solar projects are, so we can have some idea of how much of our, how much of the forest we're losing. Because in the long run, that could be a huge issue, especially in terms of erosion and so forth. So it's unfortunate that we have, that we, you know, I wish, I wish we had really seen this back when we were talking about the original contracts and had seen how many other arrays were gonna pop up all over the place. I think that, I think, no, it would have been very difficult. I agree, but it would have been nice to have some idea of where that was, because it might, it might have changed how we looked at it.
Mr. Knight?
Yeah, I just have a couple of, a couple of things. So under the new smart program, the bigger, the bigger incentives go to smaller solar. I don't have it in front of me, but under $250,000, the most incentives go to that. Under $500,000, they get a little less generous. 500 to a million, 500 to a 1-megawatt, even less generous. These are large. So I think the financial incentives for things like this are gonna be gone or going away. I don't think it's gonna be the big push like we had. Everything you see being built right now, I'm not sure about the one you're talking about, is something that was permitted in the past under the old program.
No, and I get that, I get that.
So there's, there's a lot of money to do that. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe a bunch of smaller, smaller things are gonna come up, but then they still get the connection issues to deal with. But I really just wanted to ask Attorney Madouse a question. So, and I think you've said it, and I just wanted to confirm it for myself and for anybody else here. So under the other, all the other sites, we have a contract. We voted to do that. This one right here, it's a significant change.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
It's, it's a significant change. It's a different site than what was specified in the agreement we entered.
This, we still have an option.
Yeah.
Well, I assume so. I just wanted to hear it, so we're all on the same page.
That's a good question. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Steves, you got something else?
I have, I have several questions, more that are more specifically related to the pilots. So I don't know if you want me to ask them, or do you want to talk about the first?
Yeah, let me talk in general about the pilot. Again, I defer the legalese. I come up with the concepts. A lot of this is just from other pilots that they've done and some, you know, tailored to ours. But the way the pilots work is this. You basically come up with a valuation agreement. So this is personal property. It's valued, it's taxed at, it's cost, it's cost less depreciation. And unfortunately, from the time we started with this and they presented to us and the pilots I was getting three years ago, the cost on 1-megawatt of solar, three years ago, was $2.3 million. So we would have gotten and used that as an assessed value, were a percentage of that, depending on what we depreciated, $2.3 million. The cost has come down remarkably. So the cost on these, the finished cost, is gonna be anywhere between 1.6 and 1.7 million dollars. What does that mean? Well, we value it less because it's worth less. So that's the drop in cost in three years. In three more years, what's it gonna be? I can't tell you, but that's, you know, that gives you, that gives you a little bit of a shudder. The good thing about these pilots is we're agreeing on numbers now that carry forward for a long time. So this is still a very good pilot. Very, very good. It's the same terms as we did three years ago. Three years ago, we had something that would just knock your socks off. This one right here, I would, could have been knock your socks off, but the cost on their equipment has come down, and, you know, I just can't, I can't charge them for more for things than they pay for it. So.
That actually points out something I was, I was actually concerned about, because you notice if you look at each of these documents, they refer to the federal import tariff, and it adds up to a huge sum of money. Why are, why is the town essentially paying their tariffs?
Well, you can look at that a number of different ways. You can look at that a number of different ways. It's sort of like an investment tax credit, where they get the money off, off of what they buy. So does that mean, it essentially costs them less money? These tariffs were something that.
Fairly new.
Yeah, very fairly new. In fact, they haven't paid for them yet.
Trump knew.
I know, totally. I get that.
And I disagree that they're a huge sum of money. They're, like, on the Charlton Street School, it's $41,000, $42,000 in the cost, in the total cost.
Yeah, it adds up.
Well, it does add up, but.
It does.
So our board of assessors invaluable, we felt that was appropriate.
It's like a million bucks, going total tariffs on all these properties.
Right, it's true.
And, I mean, I could, I could maybe, since we're, I mean, we're not, we're not partners according to the documents, and I understand that. But, I mean, since, if we're getting some of the money and they're getting some of the money from doing this, I think it would be fairer for the town if they would be willing to always pay some of the tariffs and not post it all on the taxpayers.
If, if I may, so this is a negotiation. There's a lot of soft costs in here, a lot of, a lot of other solar companies. If you recall, maybe a year ago, I was in here with an attorney, and he had just won a large, large case. So we're, we're including in the cost a lot of things like travel, insurance, contingency, permits.
Yeah, I saw that.
There's a number of things that we're including. It was part of negotiation. We gave on that. We're not, we're not giving up on this. It's one of those kind of things. I don't think it would be appropriate to renegotiate what we negotiated over several years. We've given up on something. We've gotten other things that are typically not in there. Usually, it's just the equipment.
So again, the big factor tonight was that we're not, we're not negotiating, except for the Charlton Street, technically, but that's either you want it or you don't. It still falls within the same numbers that they said. We were still within the same $10,000 to $30,000. We're still getting our investment money that we already agreed to, voted on, negotiated. And so therefore, you know, that, we're just not, we can't just say, we changed our mind, we don't want it, because we've already accepted those parameters. What's really important is the votes in terms of, they're now separated. We have to restate them. We are mending them to the terms that Attorney Madouse mentioned to us inside. That's why we're here. That's why we're here in open session, either, because it's not a negotiation.
If I get that what you said. Everything she just said is very, very true. And on top of that, we got rid of all those termination schedules, which were a big one. So we want to agree this, because not only is it not any different, we got some real big benefit out of it, so.
Right. They weren't asking us to do more. As a matter of fact, we just got more.
I get that.
No, no, I, yeah, I'm just restating, so people understand that, because there are people who may watch this and wonder what we're talking about and why we aren't getting more for tariffs or some things, because we've already got a contract in place and we can't necessarily break it without there being repercussions there. So we're redefining the terms, which already exist, just restating the terms that already exist, I should say. And with a couple of things that have dropped out because they're no longer applicable or just doesn't make sense to have. So, that's how it was explained. That's, again, why we're here. So, all right, what do you want to go forward on the pilots? More pilot stuff? Or are we good on, do we understand the pilot situation?
I do have several questions.
Yeah, if you're legal on the document.
They're probably more for Attorney Madouse, yeah. Like in the pilot section, section two, it talks about, once the percent complete has been established, that value shall be reduced by 30%. And I was curious, first of all, what percentage complete are they referring to? Because it talks about percent complete for the project, obviously, nothing's happened, it's zero, that makes sense. And it gets to the, it gets, talks about 33% or higher percentage, even a bunch of others have gone, have happened. So what percentage that, and why would we want to cut, why, what, how would it benefit us to cut the value of their, of their taxable value?
Section, you're in?
It's page two, section two.
Okay.
Well, number paragraph two. Under interim taxes. It says, once the percent completes, in the middle of the paragraph, says, once the percent complete has been established, that value shall be reduced by 30%, and then it's defined as interim taxable basis. It seems like it's missing a percentage number in there. And I don't understand why we would want to cut the value by 30%. How would that benefit us?
My take on it is, that's the interim value before you begin year one, which is the following year.
Yeah, I get that.
So it's not complete.
But I don't understand, why would we want to cut the value of what they put in as, let me say, if I'm reading it correctly, they, let's say they get 25% done in the first year, let's say. Why would we want to kept, so, so we assume that, it's a 25% of a million bucks, so it's $250,000. Why would we want to cut that for property taxes purposes by 30%? Why would we want to do that?
I think because the value isn't, if it's not operational, I think the value of the installation, as it's in progress, is not its true value for assessment. And so that 30% reduction is recognizing work in progress.
Okay.
That it's not the full value of the investment, because it's not economically that.
Okay.
This is a, it's kind of a form pilot from, did DOR start this, or?
Yeah, this is one, this is used in 80%. I think DOR put it out. Everybody's modified it.
It came out when we were in the midst of the first round.
Yeah.
Then it, but it, but it restates that number again, in paragraph five, where it says, once the total cost of the system is established, it's appropriate to reduce it by 30%. So they're basically saying, we're gonna cut 30% throughout the life of this project, if I'm reading that correctly.
Yeah, the investment tax credit, we, it's just, it's standard in this business. You, you grant the investment tax credit, because up until very shortly ago, that investment tax credit wasn't just a credit, it was a grant. So effectively, a year ago, two years ago, maybe, effectively, if you paid a million dollars for something and you get $300,000 back as a grant, the cost was only $700,000, you know, 30% less. It's, it's common. Every one of our pilots has, virtually has this.
In the discussion, when we were talking about pilots, saying that they're not truly pilots, they're not payments in lieu of taxes, actually assessment agreements.
Sure.
As you know, DOR, season towns don't have authority to tax. It all comes from the statute. DOR has an older site. DOR has set, just like they do for utility poles or, you know, standards for taxation. They've set most of the terms here based on their knowledge, so that it's consistent throughout the state.
Another way to look at it is, if somebody buys a brand-new car for $30,000, they drive it off, it's not 30, it's not worth $30,000 anymore. You know, I mean, debatable what it's worth when you drive it home, but it's worth $27,000, $28,000, or whatnot.
It's always been a bit of an accounting scam. And at the far end of it, I also had a question about this. It talks about dropping it to a 20% salvage value and operating here 16. In the last four years of the contract is at 20%, which I can kind of understand a certain degree, but I'm also curious about, why was it set, why was it set at 20%?
Lots of reasons. Some of them are, as we just said, there's a degradation on the solar, the energy producing. So they're going down. The stuff that I just mentioned, that cost $2.3 million three years ago, now costs 1.6, 1.7. So that's enough after three years. Where's it gonna be in 20 years, 16 years? So this is the floor. I very strongly felt the money is best to get it upfront.
Yeah.
Money has a time value.
Yeah.
I've got present value stuff on all of this kind of thing. You know, it's worth much more money, it's worth much more to us upfront.
Sure. Well, each dollar value we get today is worth probably a lot more per dollar than 20 years' amount.
Right. So when I do these, I really try to negotiate them upfront. You know, it's not really front-loaded, it's just, but you try to get as much money as you can upfront. And the depreciation, the negotiation for the depreciation is a negotiation.
Right, okay.
And I think that's what I just said is pretty valid, about three years, 2.3 to 1.6. Where would it be in 17?
Okay. And the last major question I had is, under paragraph six, second paragraph, the sentence says, "No additional payments will be needed or required, however, for replacement of personal property or equipment or machinery that is non-functional, outdated, or replaced solely due to wear and tear or casualty as part of scheduled or unscheduled maintenance." Which, if I'm reading correctly, maybe you can correct me, it seems like that's saying that they can replace the panels with more efficient panels on their regular schedule, if that's what they do. But the, but the payments that they come to us keep falling. Am I reading that correctly? Why wouldn't, why wouldn't we get more money if they're, if they're, if they get higher quality panels that are more efficient and are therefore, say they change it in year 10, so they've got a new panel there that's gonna be, I don't know, 10% more efficient and going to last 10 more years? So they're gonna, so instead, so although our contract is done, it's done in 10 more years, they would replace it with a, with a panel that would last 25 years or so. So they would get an extra 20, an extra 15 years out of it. And they've got these panels that are brand new, so that their quality, their value is much higher, yet our tax, our tax payments are falling.
I don't believe, if they put anything in, if they put anything in in the existing array, it's gonna be repairs. The cost, the cost to reinstall things would be kind of dramatic. If they install new stuff, you know, not replacing what's already there, they will be charged in addition to this.
That does, that does make sense.
Yeah, I really don't think, I really don't think the scenario we're talking about is very likely. There may be small sections they have to replace, but, you know, when they're, when they're building these things, it's expensive to put them in en masse. I cannot, I cannot even fathom, you know, taking out and replacing along the way. I just saw.
Does anyone have a comment?
I read it as, the first paragraph, it would, it would lead to an increase in assessment if it adds value to the system.
Yeah.
The second sentence being, replacement of things that break, that keep the system functioning as it was intended. So it doesn't increase the value. So it wouldn't change the assessment. That's how I read the second sentence.
Counselor Steves, you were on when we did. Wait, Counselor Stevens, you were on when we did this, because I swear you brought that up before, that, that whole, that discussion has been.
I was, I was on, but I don't, I don't remember.
Yeah, I, your, oh, this discussion quite, quite, it was like, yeah, very fresh. Yeah, yeah, it was a definite deja vu moment there. I'm like, boy, we've talked about this, about new, new panels being more valued than the old panels. Yeah, it, I think you did this, this argument.
I, I don't know, I don't, that was a couple of years.
Okay.
And also, one curious, one curious question, which is jumped off by the, the last phrase of, of paragraph 12. I was curious, is there any similar phrasing? I didn't see it. The phrase I'm referring to is, "This provision will be binding on such successor." Well, in this case, it'll be our successors in the water department, water super department. But is there similar phrasing? I didn't see it, that we get the money if Mealing sells to someone else? Because that jumped, that kind of jumped out at me. I saw that phrase and I jumped back to the very first paragraph in the section. And it says, "Buy-in between Mealing Corporation and the town." And, but it doesn't state, "And Mealing's successors event." So if, if Mealing sells out.
It's just saying that it, that you're not going to, that we, they're going to get charged prevailing wage and that if, if, for some reason, water and sewer is no longer.
No, I was just, I'm just using that, that phrase, it's just caught my eye. I'm not referring to the water or sewer system at all.
So you're not, you're not to section 12? Because what this is saying is that if there's.
I know, no, I was using as a jumping off point.
If there's a private operator, we have to, the town would have to make them whole.
No, I get that. That's what I'm saying.
Excuse me.
It's number 12, page five.
I was using the phrase, just the phrase as a jumping off point. It made me think of the fact that I didn't see a phrase saying the same thing, if Mealing could get sold.
Right. It says, "If we sell our company, then the successor has to be bound by this agreement." But it doesn't say if Mealing sells, is their, is Mealing's successor bound to our contract? You know, unless we, will a successor to Mealing pay us?
As, as the contract requires.
He's just using that phrase in the wrong section.
Yeah, no, I thought.
He's reversing it, yeah.
No, that just made me think of.
Just section 11, successors and assigns.
It's binding upon successors and assigns a developer. What kind of obligations created here? We're wrong with the proper. Good job. So I knew what he was talking about. You found the spot. That's perfect. See?
We're scrambling.
All right. Everybody, we're all good with that? Are you good with that?
Uh, yeah, I guess so.
Okay, Counselor DePietro.
At year zero, who owns this equipment?
You mean at the end of the lease, is that what you're referring to? We would have an option to buy it. They own it unless we have, we utilize our option. We talked a little bit about that earlier. We have to go and get a mutual appraiser, agree about appraiser. And the town could make a decision if they want to buy it or not. Otherwise, it would stay with the existing operator.
Presumably, this company becomes defunct. I'm sorry.
I tried to interrupt you.
Oh, all right.
The lease provides that they're obligated to, well, give us a notice before the end of the term and then we can elect to pursue that independent appraisal and make a determination as to whether we would exercise the option to purchase it for that independent appraisal value. Or if we do not, they're obligated to remove it, whether a successor, whomever the owner is at the time. But we will have security if they fail to remove it for the decommissioning.
But we could negotiate it a lot, if we want to keep it up too.
With a bond or?
Yeah, whatever. Once the system, the details of the system are more known, we're going to determine what the value is and what the cost would be for decommissioning and require some form of security. Whether the bond or.
If it takes one year's, we didn't want to buy it.
It's my true feeling that in the next quarter or five years, these guys are going to go down the road. And with all these solar guys, they go boop. And towns like ours are going to be stuck with all this garbage equipment. I see it coming. I'm just wondering, who's going to?
We have a bond to remove if we had to.
We do. I see it coming.
Go ahead.
Value in the material too, I've heard. I don't know if that's.
There is no bad material. I've already tried to dispose of several fields. It's at expense.
Okay. So remember, we have a contract, we're already there.
I just want to get deeper, Madam Chair.
Yeah, no, you got it. Where were you three years ago? Okay.
Just to give a, a little bit of stability, a little bit of a security feeling. So the very first one of these in town was the one up on Blackmore Road. I forget the name, it's three initials, MDB or somebody built it. Within two months of being built, they sold it. They sold it to a company called Washington Mutual, which is a big energy company. These companies like, need these in their portfolios, because if they have, making this part up, a coal, a coal plant, they need the credit, they need the clean energy from one of these kind of things. So I, I don't know where this is going to go, but I can tell you, I know that one very, very, very well. And Burego's another one across town, but it's Washington Mutual. I get a call from them constantly and, you know, how's it going there? You know, we're paying our bills, we're doing this, we're doing this. It's a large company and that gives me a good feeling on that one. And I assume these others that get sold, you know, it's the Wild West. It used to be the Wild West to build these things. They made a lot of money in building them and selling them. But it's, it's matured quite a bit.
Okay, Counselor there.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for you. I was just going to, and I know that it's been stated several times, but we, we should really focus on the changes that have been made. And we should focus on whether or not we're going to do the Charlton Street. And, you know, whether or not this is a great project or not a great project. Three years ago, we'd signed into it, unless you want to start going through, you know, all of the financial implications of that, like we, we just need to get back on focus.
Right. And that's where we're at, the pilot. Is there something you want to tell us about the pilot that we don't know?
On this one or on all of them? We're doing them more than.
Is there a difference? Are they all different?
All the pilots.
Except for the airport?
All of the pilots are the same.
Right.
Just the dollars are different based on the sizes.
Okay. So that's it, okay. So the pilot hasn't changed page to page the way, there's not been many, there hasn't been any substantial changes in the wording, the verbiage of the agreement?
No, but I would point out, when you get to the lease for the airport, the airport has changed. But the pilots are all the same on every parcel, based on the equipment they put there.
All right, sounds good. So the last, do we want, so we just talked about Charlton Street. We understand that situation. Do we want to go to the airport and then do all the votes after? Yes, keep going.
Total amounts, that's, we need to do the valuation of this, so you understand what the valuation is.
Of which one? Of what?
Of all of them. We have, we can talk about what the money we would get from all these local pilots and stuff. We need to go through that.
Okay.
I'd like to.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, yes, Counselor. Yeah, well, I thought you were okay when she, okay, I'm sorry.
Five minutes ago, I was going to ask you to wait and find a spot. Within five minutes, take a recess. I recognize when I go to the bathroom now, you're not going to have a quorum, so I need to request a recess.
Yeah, that's fine.
Right now, please.
And I, and I said this to you before privately, I would prefer if people need to do that, we take a recess. So, all in favor of a five-minute recess?
As opposed to ping-out passes.
It's unanimous. These are new chairs, Mark, behave. It's the way it should be, unless it's some emergency and you have to jump up. There's a will, there's a way. There he is. Good job.
Thanks.
Okay, turn them on. Ready? I think we're back in session. So we are just going to go over the financials of the pilot program. And Mr. Knoyer's going to tell us about it.
Would you like me to talk about all of them in general or, and you vote on the agenda item? Or do you go over all of them? Or do you want me to do them when you get to that agenda? Would you like me to do it?
I said go over all of them.
Be quicker to go over all of them.
Yeah, whatever you feel.
Okay. So we just talked about Charlton Street. The water department, Worcester Street won. So basically, that's 1.218, 1.2 megawatts. And the total payments for the pilot are going to be $343,286. The total lease payments are going to amount to, over the 20 years, $243,600. So the total revenue to the town on that one is $586,887.
Our number six.
I never said 606.
Yep.
We want more.
This is the new sheet here.
Okay, let me take a look at that.
Here, Mark, you have the, you should have, but it's in your packet.
I know, it's in my packet.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was looking at my working paper.
I was going to say.
So, okay, the Worcester Street one, there's a, there's a, there's a, an overall sheet here too.
It's right underneath here.
Yeah, you guys all have it.
Okay, so I'm sorry, I apologize. The Worcester Street one, the 20-year value of the lease, $343,600. The 20-year value of the pilot, $343,287. And.
606,290.
Yeah, 606,290.
They included permit fees.
Yeah, okay, that's the reason. They also included additional, the permit fees to build it.
So you reduced it?
No, I didn't reduce it. I wasn't including it when I was.
Oh, okay. So that, this is accurate, 606 is right.
606,290. I just didn't include the permit fees in my working papers. Okay, the next one is the combined 134 Torrey Road, which is behind a high school, and Dresser Hill. That's the park, the parcel behind the sewer treatment plant. That's a large facility, 5.115 megawatts. And so the lease is going to total, over the 20 years, $1,023,120. And the pilot is going to total, over 20 years, $1,441,805, including the permit. It's going to be a total of $2,546,417. 113 Torrey Road, which is to the west of, something near the high school, but it's to the west of, town, what do you call it, Town Dump Road. That's another 1, 1.285 megawatt. The lease is going to total $257,040 over the 20 years. The pilot is going to total $362,227, including the permit fees. It's a total of $639,740 in revenue to the town. So that gives a total revenue to the town of, excluding the airport, with pilot and lease and those permit fees, of $3,962,489.
I just recognize, all that money comes to the town. The airport's a little different.
Yeah, that's the reason it's broken out like that. Just, do you want me to go over the airport real quick?
Sure.
So the airport, the lease is going to be a little more, a little bit more money on that.
FAA requires proper value of land.
Yeah, well, and they also want to see, they also want to see a COLA.
Right, the 2%.
So in the negotiation, especially Counselor Steve's, remember how we talked about the tariff? Yeah. So we got money, it's the overall, we actually got money from them for, to increase the lease amount for the airport to satisfy the.
FAA requirements.
Over and above everything else on the leases to all the other places. That was something we got near the end to, to make it work. So the tariff, I did, I still feel the tariff is correct the way we did it, but we got extra money in addition to that. You know, we, I didn't give them the tariff to do that. I thought it was right. But the, the lease for the airport was increased. Anyway, so the lease for the airport is going to, first of all, the capacity is 1.352 megawatts at the airport. The lease is going to generate $487,611. The pilot is going to generate $381,167, plus the permit fees, is a total to the airport of $893,22. The, the point I think Ron was talking about earlier though is, the pilot from the airport panel goes into federal fund. The lease from the airport, airport's going to go to the airplane.
Right. So again, that's, that has to do with the, what we've talked about in the past. I just want people to know, the airport situation, land, even though it's town land, because FAA, we have grant assurances that we're familiar with. The FAA gives a lot of money over, over the many years that we've owned our airport to improve that airport site. All kinds of grant money, millions and millions of dollars. And because of that, they expect that what is leased there brings in a certain type of revenue and how it's used. And the money has to stay at the airport, otherwise the FAA wouldn't be so happy and they'd make you pay back your grant assurances would have to be paid back because you didn't utilize it for airport use. And it's a lot more involved, but that's kind of the real basic idea, so that makes sense. But it's good that the town can still get the lease money, or the, yeah, the megawatts, yeah.
The tax.
Yes, and that the airport will get the lease money, which will help them, so that's good.
If I could just summarize the whole thing, put it all kind of together.
Sure.
So the lease over the 20 years, combined with the airport and the town site, is $2,071,361. The pilot is approximately $2,632,734, along with the permit fees, which are about $148,715 in year, in year one, when they build these things. That's going to generate to the town, over the 20 years, $4,852,810.
Just a little note, this is kind of a side note to this. This is nice that we're getting this new revenue. Me and Karen have talked a lot about this. You guys all recognize that we're not going to have the money to pay the OPEB fund going forward because of the landfill closing. This money could make up that difference and it's really crucial. So, you know, whilst new revenue to the town, we have a problem that this could fix for us. So we, just, just so you guys have it in your mind when it comes to budget time, that's my thought, is how to address that problem.
Counselor DePietro.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just doing some quick math here. You're talking $250,000 a year.
More than that.
It's less than that.
Totally, no, it's more than that, actually. You said three something.
We're just under $5 million based on 20 years.
Yeah, we go back to my consolidated sheet. Excuse me, a second. So $4,800,000 is $2,400,000 a year on average. I'm sorry, 240,000.
Back out the.
240,000. All right, so just under $250,000.
Without the airport, well, and take out the permit fees, because those will be year one only, right?
So actually, if I could break it down a different way. In year one, because of the pilot is much higher in year one, two, three, four, and five, and six. In year one, the total cash flow to the town, the pilot and the lease, forgetting about those permit things, because in my, in my calculations, I didn't worry about the permits. In year one, forgetting, forgetting about the permits, we're going to get in $325,460 in year one. Year two, $319,157. And it drops because the pilot goes down. So in year 10, we're still getting $227,994. And in the later years, years 16 to 20, it's about $162,000. So you're right, on the average, it's about the 240, whatever calculates.
Okay.
But the money is all coming upfront, so it's a much higher present value. The lower amounts in the years, in the future years, aren't worth as much today.
Fair enough. How many acres are we talking about total here?
It's a really good question. I have it right here. So Charlton Street is two acres of leased area. Worcester Street is 7.39. Torrey Road and Dresser Hill is 40.24. 113 Torrey Road is 9.29, and the airport is 8.56.
922.9, and the airport is?
8.56.
It totals about 66.
66.
About 66 acres here.
66 acres?
Yeah, that's all it is.
Nine, nine 22.9?
No, nine point.
Nine point two.
Nine acres.
All right, so 62 acres.
Right, 66.
So just to, just to get our arms around this as a group, so we'll get 62 acres of land that we're going to devote to this project for 20 years.
We already did.
We already did.
You're, you're barking the wrong thing. We already did. We're not negotiating, renegotiating. We are obligated in this contract.
So why are we having this conversation?
Because we, because we have to, because it used to be in one contract and now we've separated them into five contracts. That's one of the reasons. So we have to amend and restate that we're voting on them separately. Two, Charlton Street has changed. It'll probably drop off of this, the way it seems like it's, the people here don't want to vote to change the Charlton Street contract. Okay, so that's probably going to go away, so we have to vote on that. And three, the airport changed, it's its own contract, as I just said, we have to vote on it. And it did have a few significant changes, not to, you know, just because of the way the FAA has made us valuable.
I missed, I missed the whole premise of this meeting.
Right, we're not negotiating there. We have to, we have to.
So we're talking about, what was a bad contract and just saying, okay.
It was a really good SRET contract. It's a okay-now contract, in my opinion. It's better-than-nothing contract. It's still got some very good points, as were pointed out tonight, and less liability, as was pointed out tonight.
So the point of my vote this evening is exactly what? Just to continue.
To do the legal matters that counsel needs to do. We are here for two hours doing what counsel has to do, because it's a contract and we, we ratify all contracts.
Has about 5 million good points in it.
And it's really great public disclosure, because we have not done this on this project in front of the cameras this deep, probably ever. So because subcommittee meetings were held, negotiation.
For the record, Madam Chair, I think it's a horrible contract.
Okay. For the record, Counselor, Counselor DePietro, thank you. We can respect that opinion, absolutely. Okay?
I think we gave you all the numbers, I think.
Except you gave us numbers with Charlton Street, correct?
Yeah.
You added that total with Charlton Street, which is small, right? And you also included the airport in the overall, but technically, we're not getting all that money. all that money to the gen, to us, we're getting just a portion, correct? So, it will be less than $325, to be able to use for OPEB or anything.
Yeah, so let me just say the Charlton Street number. It's total over 20 years, it's $164,000, so.
Right. So, it's less, yeah.
Just to comment about your point, you're actually right. It starts off at $300,000. OPEB, we're putting in about $250,000 now. So, the first years will be very beneficial in terms of OPEB. We may not even put in all 300, but later on, it's gonna be less than the OPEB, but at least that, then we can add some more money to it, you know, so.
Right. Oh, no, no, I didn't mean to-
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
No, what I was saying, that you gave us a number, $325,460, which included Charlton Street, so even if you took off 25 or whatever, but you also, that also included the airport, and we, again, we don't get the lease, we get the pilot. So, I'm just saying, the number is not, the number we could use for OPEB still isn't, say, 300, probably, whatever, something else.
Right, smaller.
Something smaller. I'm just pointing that out, because we're not getting to utilize all that money, but it's still money, it's revenue to the community, and it's revenue to the airport.
If I could just clarify, Charlton Street, in year one, the high point is $11,000.
Okay, so that's not much, negligible. And then the amount that we would, the pilot for the airport versus the lease for the airport?
The lease for the airport is the part that wouldn't count, and in year one, that's 19, towards the town general fund, that's $19,570.
Okay, so, alright, so between the two, we're down under, about the 300, just under 300. Okay, that's, right, yeah. Alright, again, it was just informational, that's-
Do you have enough bucks to go to the suburbs?
Could do that, too. Or we could pay our OPEB obligations and bomb those roads, and ask the town if they wanna do. Okay. So, we good with explanations? Any more questions as to what's been presented this evening? And we'll just move forward, and if there's questions, you can ask them then, too, 'cause that's, that's how we do it, so.
Well, so what were the, so you haven't specifically stated what the specific changes to the airport lease were yet.
Was there anything else specific on the lease that were, besides the 2% COLA?
Yeah, so, in the leasing agreement, it has the numbers there, but, so the lease at the airport, oh gosh, I can't find the number I wanted.
It's number, what's number four, backup?
Yeah, it is, I'm just trying to figure out what year one is. So, in the, in all the other leases, it's $10,000 per megawatt, which would mean, 'cause the airport has 1.352 megawatts, all, if it was $10,000, it would be 13, $10,000 per megawatt, it would be $13,552. But it's not. They've sweetened it, and they've put an escalator into it. So, Exhibit D on all of your documents, it's the only one, it has, it has the schedule. So, in year one, instead of being the $13,000-
$552.
$552, it's $19,573.72. So, it's considerably higher, considerably higher. And then there's a 2.25, I believe, CPI adjustment in each year, which raises it up every year, which is something that hopefully will satisfy the FAA. But it's also additional money that was, above and beyond what's in the other, in the agreement here, that we did two years ago.
Right.
That we got.
So, positive changes. So, while the number might start to decline, the 2.25 each year will help to reduce that, that decline, the slower decline.
Correct.
Compared to the others.
Well, this is on the lease, and the lease is not gonna decline, it's gonna go up.
We should prepare it.
Right, no, no, right, the lease might, right.
Pedible, yeah.
It's a little bit more revenue, even it's a little less, it's a little less of a little less.
Just to clarify, is there a similar escalator in the lease to the other companies?
No, there's not.
No, there is.
FAA requires.
This is an FAA requirement.
Yeah, I get that, but why, but why wasn't that put in the lease to the other companies?
Well, you gotta remember, this is the lease from two years ago, which was at $30,000 a megawatt. If the S-RIC program, which everybody, you know, that's what everybody had been operating on.
Yeah, I get it.
And the 10,000 is the floor. So, because of the smart program, it generally is offering far less incentives to these companies. Regardless of that, we had a 10,000 floor, there was nothing needed about an escalator then, and, you know, we had an agreement here that we have to live by.
Yeah.
30 was appropriate. Alright, we're good? So, we're gonna move on, then I'm gonna go through some of these motions here, and that's, okay.
In all of the payment schedules, you mentioned tax rate, and it stops at, like, year eight at .025 of tax. I'm just curious, how, why did you, why did you select to stop it there?
It stopped.
My logic said that we keep, keep going, and I don't see why, why, why would we expect to have the same tax rate for 12 straight years?
Well, here's the reason. So, two and a half years ago, when we were negotiating and estimating all this, all of this stuff, I used that tax rate, I assumed it was gonna go up at a, I can't recall what my factor is here going up, probably 2.5%. And you assume each year it's gonna go up 2.5%.
Yeah.
Well, in year eight, if it goes up 2.5% like that, what's gonna happen in year eight? It reaches $25 per thousand, which it, under, under 2.5, is the maximum tax rate you can have.
Oh, okay.
So, he throws it.
Yeah, exactly.
So, Steve.
Exactly. That makes sense.
Okay. You're good? Well, if you think of something as we're going through, you can ask.
I think I pretty much asked most of the questions I have.
Alright, so, we're gonna move on to some of these items, and I guess taking them out of order probably didn't matter as much, because we just talked about everything. So, I would say, well, you already took the notes that way. So, we're gonna just go the way we talked about it. So, that being the case, number eight will be the first. What do we do? Four is now eight. Let's see, ten, you got 10 on it. So, eight is now four, so we'll start with that one, number eight. Vote to ratify the amended and restated solar ground lease between the town of Southbridge and Mealing Corporation for 113 Torrey Road, parcel ID number 023-001 point, dash, excuse me, dash-
No point, no point.
No point, dash, 00001.
So moved.
Second. Okay. Any more discussion? This is the Torrey Road, the Torrey Road. Seeing none, all those in favor. Oh, two, yeah, all those in favor. We should be good.
I'm voting yes, I'm gonna go.
Okay, that's five unanimous.
Protest.
Okay.
I'd rather not.
Alright, moving on.
I'm trying to think of what you think.
And item five, number nine, vote the amended and restated pilot agreement between the town of Southbridge and Mealing Corporation for the assessment and payment of taxes for real and personal property at 113 Torrey Road, parcel ID number 023-001-00001.
Madam Chair, may we insert the word "ratify"? Vote to ratify the amended?
Uh, we could.
Before we have a motion?
Yeah, you know what, I'm seeing that on all of them, I'm not sure why.
Yeah. It looks to me like most of the stated pilot agreements are missing.
Went ratified. It's funny, 'cause when we talked about these, these agenda items, I, I know we discussed the word ratified, because, oh, I asked her to look up what, how we voted it the last time, too, and I'm not sure if she did pull them up, but either way, we talked about ratified.
So, your indulgence was to-
Ratify the amended.
Vote to ratify the amended and restated pilot agreement between the town of Southbridge and Mealing Corporation for the stated, rest of that sentence in parcel ID.
Right. So, okay. So, your amendment is to add ratified to each of the areas where it's missing in all the motions?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? We all satisfied with that motion?
Yeah.
Do I get a second on his motion?
He just stated the motion as ratified.
He did, but I'm asking that we include it, I'm asking that we amend these to include ratified in all of them.
I'll withdraw the motion if you're with your consent. First, and let's do it for all of them like you're suggesting.
That way, it's in, it's in the notes that we all read.
I will move.
And I will read them all that way after we do this.
Move the amended statements for all the relevant motions.
Okay, all those in favor of the amended, okay, that's unanimous. And now, we will vote on the main motion as amended, which is vote, vote to ratify the amended and restated pilot agreement between the town of Southbridge and Mealing Corporation for the assessment and payment of taxes for real and personal property at 113 Torrey Road, parcel ID 023-001-00001.
So moved.
Second.
Right. All those in favor?
Obstand.
Okay. So, we got a 4-1, still motion carries. Alright, moving on to number six, which is number 10. Vote to ratify the amended and restated solar ground lease between the town of Southbridge and Mealing Corporation for 134 Torrey Road, parcel ID number 027-001-00001.
So moved.
Second.
Can I ask a question?
And, was it two?
There are two parts.
And? Take that back, quick. And, 024-003-00001. Sorry, I didn't finish reading it. You guys jumped in quick, no, I didn't realize it was two, sorry. 'Cause you added it to mine, that's, alright, so, as I read it, are we good still?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alright, all those in favor?
Obstand.
Okay, so we're going 4-1. Alright. Now, we'll move on. Agenda item number seven, which was 11. Vote to ratify the amended and restated pilot agreement between the town of Southbridge and Mealing Corporation for the assessment and payment of taxes for real and personal property at 134 Torrey Road, parcel ID numbers 027-001-00001, and 024-003-00001.
So moved.
Second. Good discussion. Okay, all in favor? Four.
Obstand.
Four and one. Okay. Let's just hop as I'm going. Agenda item number eight, which was 12. Vote to ratify the amended and restated solar ground lease between the town of Southbridge and Mealing Corporation for Worcester Street, parcel ID number 003-032-00001.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Four.
Obstand.
Four and one. Agenda item number 13, uh, nine, excuse me, which was 13. Vote to ratify the amended and restated pilot agreement between the town of Southbridge and Mealing Corporation for the assessment and payment of taxes for real and personal property at Worcester Street, parcel ID number 003-032-00001.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Obstand.
Four and one. Okay, we'll be on to agenda item number 10, which was number six, 'cause this is how Will gave it to me. Vote to ratify the amended and restated, restated solar ground lease between the town of Southbridge and Mealing Corporation for Charlton Street School, parcel ID number 028-001B-00001.
So moved to 0.
Second.
Discussion. This is the Charlton Street property.
Understood.
As we all are very much aware, okay? All those in favor? All those opposed? Unanimous, five. Motion does not carry. Agenda item number 11, which was seven. Vote to rat, well, I guess we probably don't need, but we'll vote it anyway. We'll just vote it. Vote the rat, vote to ratify the amended and restated pilot agreement between the town of Southbridge and Mealing Corporation for the assessment and payment of taxes for real and personal property at Charlton Street School, parcel ID number 028-001B-00001.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? All opposed? But motion does not carry. So, Charles off the table. Moving on now to agenda item number 12, which was number four. Vote to ratify the amended and restated solar ground lease between the town of Southbridge and Mealing Corporation for the airport property, 220 Airport Access Road, parcel ID number 007-001-00001.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Five unanimous, motion carries. Agenda item number 13, which was five. Vote to ratify the amended and restated pilot agreement between the town of Southbridge and Mealing Corporation for the assessment and payment of taxes for real and personal property at 220 Airport Access Road, parcel ID number 007-001-00001.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Five unanimous, motion carries. And finally, the item that we added.
Can you read it slowly? I didn't write it down.
I will, I will write, I will read it slowly.
Okay, thanks.
This is now item number 14, which we added by vote at the beginning of the meeting, three hours ago, no, two hours ago. The motion is, vote to authorize the town manager to enter on behalf of the town of Southbridge the amended and restated solar ground leases as approved by the town council, and amended and restated pilot agreements as approved by the town council on this day, June 14, 2018.
You got that?
Yep.
You do?
I got the gist, oh yeah.
It's pretty much the same as the rest of our-
We just take all that, are you good?
Yeah. So moved.
Second.